I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, minutes have been circulated for June 6th as well as June 13th's meetings. Everyone has had an opportunity to take a look at them. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Councilor Valcha, second by Councilor Fisillo. Any discussion, additions, deletions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Under general information and recommendations...
Mr. President, I was gonna abstain on that because I wasn't at the sixth meeting.
Okay.
Just checking, is Councilor Honin on? Do we know?
She is. Is Councilor Honin on?
She's not on yet, no.
Okay. Under general information and recommendations, we are fortunate to have Jesse from Berry &amp; Dunn here. They did a study on Parks and Rec Department, very thorough study, which everyone's had the opportunity to take a look at. And I'm gonna ask Sean and Jesse if you want to come up to the table. We appreciate your time, Jesse. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for having me. Thank you. Just logistically, did we want to walk through the presentation kind of hard copy? Or are you gonna put anything up?
No, we're gonna put it. I believe it's going up on the screen.
All right.
Unfortunately, we're having some technical difficulties with this screen, but it will be on the screen behind you. Can you could tell us a little bit about how long the process has been?
Sure, sure, yep.
While it's coming up.
Would you like me to get started now?
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. My name is Jesse Myatt. I'm a manager with Berry &amp; Dunn, and I've had the pleasure of serving as the project manager on this cost recovery analysis, working with the manager, with the director, with Director Driscoll and others in the town to really perform a study that's going to identify all the direct and indirect costs associated with providing parks and recreation services. And we've been working on the project, probably about eight months total, pulling everything together, not going too fast, but going fast enough to get some recommendations developed and leaving no stone unturned. So we're confident that we've captured all of the ins and outs associated with all of the services that the department provides to the town. All right, here we go. And we can go right to there. And I've already started a little bit. If you go to that project background slide, agenda, we'll talk a little bit about, more about the project, hit the summary of findings, talk about some high-level recommendations and considerations that were developed, and of course, leave ample time for questions and discussion. And as I was saying, the town partnered with Berry &amp; Dunn about eight or nine months ago to perform a park and recreation cost of service analysis. That was looking at all of the sources and uses of the department, the revenues and expenses associated with service delivery, and how that crosswalks and revenues are generated and expenses are allocated to the services that are provided on the department's master fee schedule. In looking at that, we've met with the town project team on multiple occasions, ensuring that we were collecting all of the relevant information, making sure our interpretations were correct within the context and scope of department service delivery, and just ensuring that we've captured all of the information that we needed to pull together for the analysis. We compiled all of that into a cost of service model that was developed, as well as the project report that I am sure you all have had a chance to take a look at, in really outlining in great detail not only our approach, but the recommendations and findings that we'll touch upon here tonight. In looking at the summary of findings, we're gonna put up two fiscal years versus high-level findings. We elected in project initiation and planning to look at fiscal '19 and then jump to fiscal '22, as naturally skipping fiscal '20 and '21 as they were not normal years in any sense of the imagination. So we kind of wanted to take that last kind of best year, normal year, and really compare it to how things are shaping up for fiscal '22 and then as they were leading into fiscal '23. In looking at all of the revenue and expense findings associated with service delivery for 2019, we can see up there on the slide that we identified about $298,000 of revenue generated by way of services that there is a current fee in charge being assessed for. That counters to the $358,000 of expense that was incurred to provide those services in fiscal 2019. And you can see that translates to a cost recovery, kind of the terminology, the speak we use when we perform these types of analysis, of the department recovering, the town recovering about 83% of the cost to provide services through the department for 2019. This is of particular interest in this particular department because there is a fund whereby which excess revenue can go into a fund balance or a reserve fund balance to be used for associated service delivery and program development in the future. Looking at '19, we obviously didn't generate more than we expended, and we can see that naturally that's going to deplete that reserve fund balance for that particular year. Similarly, same approach in fiscal '22. Revenue generation was a tad bit higher at $293,000. Expenses were about $328,000 for the same menu of services delivered. Not only was the year similar, but it was a similar service delivery year as well. There wasn't really any different services that were delivered in '19 than '22, so naturally, as close as we can get to an apples-to-apples, '19 and '22 did line up nicely. We can see that same approach in modeling the revenue and allocating the expenses. We've landed about an 89% cost recovery for '22. So while a little bit better than '19, still obviously not up to that 100% or 100% plus, and therefore, another hit to that reserve fund balance. And certainly, that's something that we always want to keep an eye on in these particular projects, in that not only is it a rainy day fund, again, for another, you know, '20 and '21 year, but it also allows for program development, business and service continuity if necessary, or is capital investments, a pay-as-you-go type of approach rather than utilizing another source of funding or going out to the market for debt or something of that nature. So certainly, that was a couple of areas that we start to see the structural deficit, right? We'll want to look at where we can start to generate some additional revenue to get closer to that 100% cost recovery on an annual basis.
Come on, slide.
It doesn't want to go either. Just a little slow, slowing the heat today, right? In starting to look at additional revenue generation for the two years that we identified and then subsequent years, we also want to go back and look at the cost model to see where the vast majority of revenue and expenses is being generated, and what types of services or service categories or service groupings are generating the revenue and, you know, expending the costs to provide those services. In looking at the aggregate, we can see that across both fiscal years, summer programs generally deliver about a 96% cost recovery. So good, very good. Compared to industry averages, certainly for a community of this size and a service menu of this size, the national standards, which are self-reported however, are down in that 85% round. So certainly, the department is up there, but not everybody carries that special revenue fund or fund balance whereby which we want to be sure that we do get some contributions to that year over year. Similar approach on winter, you can see about 98% cost recovery over the two years. Fall and spring programs, while the biggest revenue and expense generators individually only recovering about 84%, and then so on and so forth. Permits and courses and tennis and pickleball's a bit of an outlier, but there are services and revenue and expense associated there in those groupings, so we did include those as well. On the next slide, as we start to crosswalk to fee development and eventual recommendations for fee levels or adjustments should the town consider that appropriate avenue to embark on, we start to look at, if we do make fee adjustments, where are we gonna get the biggest bang for our bucks? So similar on the cost recovery standpoint, we look at the total revenue generated. Where is our revenue coming from for the programs and services that we're delivering? And we can see about, for the two fiscal years, summer programs, while I have a high cost recovery, only generating about 35% of the total revenue for the department. Similar analysis on winter programs, you can see that 15.4%. And then the fall and spring programs, about almost half of the revenue generated comes from those programs and services that are delivered for those particular categories. And so clearly, a fee adjustment there is going to have a larger impact than the other categories that are displayed there. And that allows us to really drill down to service by service and not to do just a blanket wholesale fee increase. We really want to look to see if we adjust in fall and spring, what's the impact versus if we adjust across the board for summer and winter. So certainly, a deep dive into that, we're seeing the high-level analysis there, but clearly, as it's laid out in the report, we did do our homework. And then finally, on the summary of findings for both of those fiscal years, just wanted to pull together some high-level points of the two fiscal year aggregation. So overall, across the two fiscal years, we identified and assigned about $591,000 in revenue on top of about $686,000 in expenses. And that's the entire world, and that encompasses all grant funding, as you can see there, included in the overall revenue, however, we treat it differently when we're talking about fees and fee adjustments, and the $133,000 of indirect or non-discretionary expense. So that's not an expense that can be directly tied to service delivery, however, it is an expense that is incurred in support of service delivery, so to speak. Both fiscal years that we looked at, we did see a decline in the department fund balance, which further necessitates looking seriously at fee increases. And we can see at the, as we were approaching the end of the analysis and getting into FY '23, that fund balance was down to about $31,000 for the department. And what we see as an average, and again, it's not my favorite thing to do as far as national standards and self-reporting because everybody is organized differently, we generally see organizations, departments, towns and cities that do have special revenue funds or enterprise funds that carry a fund balance for parks and recreation types of services, like to keep it in the 50% to 75% level of annual expenditures, to go ahead and say, I don't need to carry a full year, but we'd like to have about three-quarters of a year in annual expenditures. And that's not to say that that's going to be used to, you know, fund annual expenditures, but it's a general rule of thumb. Again, it could be used for capital and program development, can be used for that business and service continuity if it is needed, but generally, a little bit more than, you know, the $31,000 we see there. So we'd like to kind of get organized to start to allow the department to make some further fund balance contributions in order to continue to deliver services at current levels and provide additional services in the future based on town prioritization. And finally, the last couple of slides gets us to pulling together what are the recommendations and considerations out of all of this? In the first slide we see here, in modeling all of the revenue and expense over the years and kind of looking at a trend for where '23 was finishing and what we can expect on the expenditure side for FY '24, we're looking at the adjustments in the realm of about 5% to 7% to get things back up closer to that 100% cost recovery level. And now we know, as is with a building permit environment or community development, revenues are cyclical. You're gonna have ups and downs. You're never gonna have, you know, one year where you're gonna be, or multiple years back-to-back-to-back if, over 100%, even if you do raise fees in, you know, quite a bit. However, it is based on participation trends, services offered. If we do see additional service delivery offered, that could also be additional revenue generation in lieu of fee increases. However, given the current fees and charges environment, we do think that the summer and winter programs necessitate a 5% increase in that fall and spring program category, the one that is almost about half of the annual revenue generation, about a 7% fee increase for the programs and services offered in that category. That should generate, you know, all things being equal for the years that we analyze, we'd hope to see greater participation and additional services offered. But as good as our crystal ball is and the model that we developed, we can expect that that'll bring us closer to that 100% cost recovery on an annual basis and hopefully exceed that occasionally to contribute back to fund balance. And then the last slide, in addition to fees... There we go. Then I won't make it go farther anymore after this one. In addition to just raising fees for additional revenue, we can also look at the expense side of things, right? Expense control, expense monitoring will have the same effect. If we can kind of control expenses to a realistic extent in certain areas, that will increase cost recovery without any additional revenue generation. So we encourage and laid out some approaches in the report for the department to really monitor those direct expenses, but also keep an eye on those indirect allocations and non-discretionary expenses on an annual basis, whether or not they have control over it, but just to monitor what the impact may be to help assess those fee levels in the future. As I alluded to, participant monitoring is very key in that the participants are the ones that generate the revenue. And so utilizing recreation, registration, and permitting software to understand trends and kind of participant counts will give us, give the department also an idea of where we might see ups and downs in the future. Laid out just a few pricing strategies. There's not just one way to price a program. You can take various approaches such as impact pricing and market pricing and things of that nature that are laid out in the project report. That may be more applicable or less applicable depending on the program or service that you're looking at. And then just naturally, fee reviews on an annual basis. This doesn't necessarily mean that you have to embark on a fee study like this annually, but really looking at where things are trending toward the end of the year to understand, you know, are adjustments going to be made in certain areas? And we find by looking at that complete package, that rounds out that, really, that meeting those revenue requirements on an annual basis along with select fee increases as well. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information that the council would like.
Hi, thank, can't thank you enough for being here. And I had a couple of questions and I'll pass it along. You know, you mentioned new programs, basically like pickleball, tennis, and I know a lot of that literally just started and is probably going to grow exponentially, and there might have been startup costs involved as well. But I think, you know, to think outside the box like that, which is so fast and growing, I think that's a good opportunity. I want to thank Sean for his work too, because I think he's also implemented some of these suggestions already, which is very, very good. When you talk about, and you talked about it a number of times, about indirect cost, right?
Mm-hmm.
You talked about indirect, non-discretionary. I think when we think of indirect costs, it's different than what you're talking about indirect costs. We talk about it in a budgetary format, and we talk about it in terms of the percentage of help that maybe Town Hall provides payroll department and such. And I think you're thinking of it in a different way. Can you just itemize a couple of what you consider indirect costs or non-discretionary costs?
Actually, in this sense, we're thinking about the way that you just defined it there.
So you think that...
So there is, there's an annual indirect allocation that is applied, and we took the aggregate. So we didn't get into the construct of the number that's arrived at for the town, but we did take into consideration that the indirect says you would...
You're saying that it's $130-something thousand dollars for just a court from Town Hall in terms of, like, you know, writing a check or...
So that's a two-year aggregation there, but that whole 137 wasn't the direct allocation from Town Hall. It was also some of those other non-discretionary expenses, such as a utility or a minor capital expense as well that would have come up, that we just identified in looking at the GL and the information that was provided. But the, I would say the majority, by far, over those two years, inclusive in that 137, were the indirect allocations that just come from the accounting exercise, right? And we're not qualifying that as good or bad, right or wrong as part of this study. We're just identifying as an expense to the department that needs to be taken into consideration when we do calculate a cost recovery and then therefore project out a fund balance level for future years as well.
And my last question, and I'll open it. You talked about fees, and obviously, you know, we should always monitor fees and such. Do you do an analysis for us other municipalities similar size and scope as to the fees? And, you know, it's one thing to say, you know, we need to raise fees 5%. If you're way at the bottom, 5% really doesn't help. If you're way at the top, it's like maybe we're going, maybe we gotta control costs more than raise the fees. Do you have any idea of where we are in terms of fees compared to other municipalities?
We did do a fee-to-fee level. That's a great question. Two things there. We certainly feel the fee increase, while not doing the elasticity or the impact on a higher-low level that you alluded to for this particular scope, would be a natural increase that does fit with industry norms for a community of this size and a service delivery framework of this size. So not only do we have a population and a community makeup, but the department is, you know, its fees and charges environment is very unique to this. So you could have a similar community that does a lot less or a lot more, which we'd have to bake into the analysis for fees. Going back to the information that we did uncover for this particular study, I will say that you are on the higher end, as I alluded to, for a cost recovery comparison framework, when we just look at community to community, a national benchmark to a national benchmark, which is useful to a certain extent, because again, Winthrop is unique and Winthrop needs to do things that the way that they're organized and serve those community priorities. However, the community benchmark for an organization of this size is that 80% to 85%. However, we don't have the information to discern which agencies are a fund balance agency and which agencies are not. That's just not a self-reported metric. We'd have to kind of do the same analysis for each. With a fund balance or a reserve fund type of agency such as the department here in Winthrop, we certainly want to work towards that higher end regardless, right? We want a contribution to fund balance, not just to say that we want to generate revenue for the sake of generating revenue. However, it does pay for, again, that business continuity, that program and service development. You alluded to Little League or all of the other things that Sean and the department is doing. Without looking for additional expenditure allocations through the budget process on an annual basis, perhaps the fund balance could be used for that program development or a capital expenditure, the redoing of a tennis court or something of that nature without hitting another fund. So we kind of look at it in that framework.
Okay. Let me go around. Councilor Fisillo, do you have any questions?
Sure, thank you. Couple of questions. I noticed there was a report of, looked like $25,000 in grants for each of the two years you examined. In your sense of looking at other organizations of this size, are we hitting about where we should, or should we think about trying to be more aggressive in trying to bring in grants? Where do we sit with respect to that number?
So with respect to that, and the specific grants that are utilized in this for the part-time expenditures is very impressive actually for that on an annual basis, to use that grant funding to fund most, if not all, of the part-time staff that, for the associated programs there. The level is usually determined on the availability of the grant source to begin with. So we do see that this particular area for that type of grant funding to fund salaries and wages, whether it's a state or some sort of federal funding source that's funneled down through the state or through the county and eventually hits the town or the city, there's not as much in other areas as there are in other areas of the country. So that's a long way of saying that. The fact that there is a secure of about $27,000 annually for part-time staff, given the department budget is only up in that 300,000 to $50,000 to $400,000 range from a ratio perspective is very impressive. We always will encourage, if there are resources allowed, to look for additional funding sources, whether they be grant-related or other one-time funding sources that may be offered through the state, or again, some sort of federal program that may be funneled down through the state. Those are the things that it just takes time and resources to do, to have somebody kind of investigate those things and really make the determination, is this right for the town? Would it be worth our time to gather up the necessary information to compile an application and submit? However, we do always encourage either monitoring the state kind of grant portals or a federal grant portal as well. There are funding sources that come up and go away all of the time. Could do a specific analysis with regards to that, but I think given the size and the resources that the department has at the moment, I think they're doing very well. However, always good to keep your eyes and ears open.
Sure. And then Sean, probably a two-part question for you, and I'll give you both parts. Are there any free athletic or recreation programs, whether it's in the schools or what you run, left in the town of Winthrop, or is everything pretty much on a fee basis at this point?
Everything pretty much fee-based on our end. I'm not sure it's full, but I will tell you, we started a camp this week, just quick scenario, and we have people that cannot afford much or anything. And we do our best to accommodate them based on the fees that I already built in for that. That's something that, especially with people in town that are looking for free stuff that we don't offer because they really can't.
Yeah.
I mean, in my situation, I can't because then I'll be back in, you know, Y minus X amount of dollars. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So that's something to look at, you know, with the grant stuff up on.
Yeah, yeah. So there is a demand for waiving and reducing fees and all that we need to be cognizant of.
Yeah, every year it's picked up with questions. I give you the perfect example. We have a church in town that's doing soccer lessons down on Ingleside Park. Their criminal estate is all free. They do it as free as a donation. It's great. They can grade their water events. And we appreciate that. A lot of those kids take advantage of that, but there isn't any done by our department that fits that.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's just something important for us. I don't want to sort of put words into police departments thing, but I think building good character and having kids around town know each other and having to make sure they're all feeling welcome.
Right, now, with that said, with that's...
We've got to figure out how to accommodate kids.
With that said, we do what police, incorrect, I'm invited to list, not in this report, but the police do open the gyms all winter in lawn, one night a week. They do events with the kids that are $0. Stuff like that's going on.
Yeah.
But as far as athletic programs, stuff that costs us money?
Yeah.
No. I mean, chief and all the police officers have been great with that program.
Yeah.
And like to keep that going, and they get some grant money for that and help fund some of the office's time, I believe. But...
Sure.
That's probably the biggest thing we have going on that does not cost. We get some kids off the street for three or four hours on Friday night consistently.
Yeah, okay. Children in the community that play with the youth hockey or with the Little League that do get grants from different foundations within the town that do help support them when they ever need.
Yeah.
Councilor DiMarco?
Councilor Fisillo, I can tell you that the soccer program that he's talking about over on Ingleside Park, it's run by the Harbor City Church. They had 142 applicants, and if anybody shows up and doesn't, and hasn't applied, they're taking them too. So it's a great asset to the community. I also never thought I'd see a slide on pickleball at a town council meeting, but, well, it's the most, believe it or not, it's the most, it's becoming the most popular new sport in the United States, is pickleball, believe it or not.
That's the number-one priority we hear from strategic planning in the park and rep world or a master planning effort is pickleball, pickleball, pickleball.
All right. I would like to see a more detailed breakdown of where the services are spent at Parks and Rec, but other than that, I don't have any questions.
So if we do that on a consistent basis for every, I'll call it every season for every program.
Yeah.
Our job as a department is to try to get to that break-even point and maybe make a few dollars here or there and help the cover. So when someone comes to us and they can't afford the whatever program, we have some in the kitty kind of more or less.
Yeah.
Financially. So to that point, you know, when these reports were done in these years...
Yeah.
The indirects weren't as high as they were. They started coming in higher that year, and our fees did not represent 2019 was indirect costs.
Yep.
What was the other year? I'm sorry, 2022.
Two.
Okay, a little bit better in '22. But we didn't start doing that with our enterprise fund until most recently. Now, some of these things that you're gonna see where you saw tonight have already been implemented and gone up.
Okay.
Much to some people's dismay, but I don't think a lot of people realize the system when you have a new kid just growing up, going through the events, seeing all the stuff. They don't understand the cost of, of course, it's, you gotta sit down and weigh it. But to answer your question, yeah, I mean, we can, we can price anything out in seconds and try to get our money back, but it also depends on participation. I can say this thing's gonna cost $40,000, but I only got $30,000 worth of revenue.
Yeah.
Then you're gonna make a decision, hey, we gotta mix this program. It's costing me $10,000. And we've done that before. Years ago, before the, our budget started going up in general, we used to run those programs because we knew the summer program was gonna get us more money. So if we lost $5,000, it didn't make a difference.
You'd make it up.
Maybe $75,000 or something else. Now, unfortunately, we have canceled stuff in the past, not as much before COVID, but COVID was tough.
Yeah.
We went through it, you know, and we did a pretty good job in those years that are not reported. But to answer your question, that can be done.
Yeah, okay. Well, Ella's at sleepaway camp this week, so you get her next week. She's all yours.
Councilor Valcha?
Thank you. Would the proposed annual adjustments, as I saw in the recommendations, would those tend to be around the 5% to 7% increases, or do you think that's an initial jump and they'll be smaller going forward?
Yes. So it's just the initial increase, and then we go into kind of that monitoring for the next fiscal year, and certainly a select-by-select. Hopefully, they would be, maybe not even need to be touched for the following fiscal year, but certainly don't envision a back-to-back 5% to 7% or something of that nature. That wasn't the intent of the recommendation. That's the one-time right-the-ship recommendation and then kind of go back into maintenance mode after that.
Thank you. And I saw that a mid-year adjustment was recommended, Sean. Has that happened already?
Yes, it's happening. It's happened with one of our biggest programs with NFL Flag. We get a good partnership with them, and it's huge. I mean, we've got some coaches here. I mean, we've got some coaches here. They've done it. The education part of it for me and my staff has been huge, and we keep getting more on it. But with that said, we had to go up there. A lot of people didn't like those costs because as far as the time commitment for it, we'll see one night, possibly a game or two, there's not a lot of practices or anything, so we have to explain that. But, yeah, no, a lot of stuff's happened, and, you know, talking with Tony and meeting with Jesse, you know, whacking everyone seven percent, we want to get to that point, I think, across the board. So we're going to get a good look at it with our summer program and how it worked out. The other uphill battle we have the last two years revenue-wise is the schools doing in catch-up mode with their program in the summer where they're offering free stuff, which is, you know, let's be honest, if you're a parent, don't be sending there to get a little better with the school stuff. And then, you know, we lose out on that. Like, our numbers are down normally this year, and a lot of the parents usually have, you talk to them, he didn't register this year, well, he's going to go to the school program and need some extra help or whatever the issue may be, which is fine. And we've done a nice job monitoring when that's all. Like, we started a week earlier, we just thought everyone else this week, and we're trying to take advantage of those opportunities as well and trying to keep the same rates. Because I always tell staff, people, there is no competition. I don't consider competition out there. Everyone's trying to do what they can for kids in the community as a whole. But at the same time, we can't be too high where they're not going to come to us based just on dollar signs, and we have to offer a product that they then want to come for, you know, on a regular basis. And we want the brother, the sister that's younger to come the next year. That's who we try to build. And I think we've done a pretty good job over the years with that, with very little resources as far as, let's say, a building. The gym now we have is huge help, given your office's hours. It's not, you know, perfect thing, so we're battling through that. But to answer your question, we're getting there.
Consul Madsen?
Thank you. Thank you both, and I appreciate it. I just wanted to start off by saying I think that the Parks and Rec provides such a critical role for our town, and as Consul Aiello mentioned earlier, it's just good for keeping the kids active, good for developing community, and, you know, I think that I'm of the mind where if you guys need support, granted, it's an enterprise fund and you guys are taking on some more indirect costs, if there's need for more support, I'm of the mind where it's so important that let's go ahead and support when you're needed. I did have a couple of question for you. I guess Council President Luteri asked you if these prices were in comparison on level with other towns, and I didn't feel as though I understood the response. So is four hundred dollars for a summer program inexpensive or expensive or right-on-par for a community of this size? Because it feels like that's a steal to me.
Yes. So we have to look at the unique. So as part of the scope, in order to keep costs lower and whatnot, we didn't do what we typically call a peer comparison, which is taking this department and comparing it to five or six other jurisdictions. Again, I think we get that residually through, as Sean probably has that information.
I could add that, might be able to provide for him. So part of our summer program, our eight weeks or even nine weeks in some cases, our staff is funded by a grant from the Water, I'm with the Mass Port Authority.
Right.
So that, we do one payment for the summer park program, the A, this is called A3, the 12:00 p.m. program. That's all built in for seven weeks. It ends up being, I think, thirteen or fourteen dollars a day. But if I was to pay the staff and not from that grant, and that's decisions that have to be made, you're getting, you know, good piece of change to keep the cost down on the salary of people so we're able to do it at that cost, so we cover all our expenses. Now, that's something to take a look at, but at the same time, I think the people of Winthrop have earned that with, you know, dealing with Mass Port, to get a little bit of a break or something. Because we would be, we would offer that for seven weeks. I think we figured out the other day we'd be at seven ninety.
Without the grants, without the additional support, right.
And you have less kids having jobs, same type of program, but you have less kids with jobs, and that's not just on the park side of working with kids, it's town halls, DPW, it's housing, it's wherever we can find a place for them. So that has to be taken into consideration, and I went over this with Jesse a lot, because I think it was fairly new to you, was getting that type of lump sum paid for.
Yeah, very impressive, yeah.
I just didn't think it's fair if I go with it close to me and then we have that grant money. Yeah, we'd probably knock it out of the park, we wouldn't get the participation, we'd lose people.
Right.
Number one. And number two, I honestly believe, again, as I'm a resident here for the most part of all life, you've got to realize that that's a, towns earn that, you know, people in towns earn it. My opinion, I'll be wrong, but that's why it looks cheaper, but if you went to something where on our program, you're probably talking a hundred and ninety a week for the park program. But our full-day program is not based on Mass Port, I mean, pretty well there a week, so.
I understand it better, and I understand now where you're coming from. It's basically just to create a level service.
It is.
And just keep the ship right.
Absolutely.
I am just curious, I saw your conclusions and your recommendations, and it seemed like, basically, for the most part, increased fees nominally to kind of right the ship, and you're back on track, we're all set. But I guess my question is, I never saw whether the revenue is actually accounting for some of the capital improvements that you ultimately need to have continuous maintenance on some of the ground, some of the equipment. I mean, my kids have been both the beneficiary of the summer programs and the actual counselors, so I know that the stuff needs to be kept up, and so I'm just curious if that is part of that.
So not to the one-time cost to redo or upkeep or something like that, there is a boundary that we have to draw to what the fee is going to fund, right, from a revenue generation standpoint? And given that this is that enterprise fund type of framework, we do want it to fund a little bit more than it costs every now and then to start to build that. We don't want to bake into redoing a park at a million and a half dollars into next year's fee schedule or the next five years. What we want to do is kind of incrementally get there, if in fact that is. I mean, naturally, some capital expenditures are just going to have to be funded through another mechanism or a debt issuance or something of that nature. The actual user fees portion, you know, would never be able to be set at a level to fund those things, and that's a natural organization. And so when we do these studies for other agencies, we certainly will consider those capital expenditures or other applicable one-time expenditures, but we have to draw the boundary when we're allocating the appropriate level of expense to the service that's being delivered. And we can. Those agencies that are larger and have a little bit more sophisticated kind of capital and project management type of tracking programs do get down to the level where they will bake in, you know, a ten-year kind of recouping mechanism into their fee for a park. However, you have to have the community and the wherewithal to be able to kind of layer that into your fee schedule. We certainly see that in a much more urban and kind of affluent metropolitan environment that usually attracts that. But for our case here, given the department's fees and charges environment, we certainly wouldn't want to bake that in because we'd be looking at a lot more than a five and seven percent increase recommendation.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. It just gives us, you know, an understanding and perspective of where this fits in the capital asset plan, et cetera, going forward.
But I think with that said, sorry, if we set a goal, and I'll use one example, I was a park in town, is the top lot now at Ingleside, twenty-four years old, which isn't bad. We're fortunate enough to have a community that got park stuff with donations and stuff and grants, you know.
Didn't you recently do the basketball courts over too?
Basketball courts with the Winter Foundation and the pickleball courts and tennis courts.
All unrelated to these.
My point is that if there was a direction, or even my own direction for that matter, set a goal that we need to fix, let's say, six two-slides somewhere hypothetically. We have the budget and our fees, but by next year, we're going to have that put in the kitty.
Yep.
Okay, and pay that. Now, we've never done that before, I've got to be honest. That's never been even an option. My thing was more keeping the programs going and making themselves sufficient, but it's something to look at going forward.
So the enterprise fund actually is of like keeping the systems going, keeping the programs going. It's not necessarily about the all total cost to provide these programs, and that's, I think, where we need to make sure that we keep that in perspective.
And let's keep in mind, I got a, you know, DPW department that I hammer a lot with stuff that we need to have some, you know, a lot to get money and stuff to do stuff with. So I think this was the park's budget has gone up over the years with just equipment stuff, so I'm fortunate with that.
Thanks for all you do, and thanks for the report.
You're welcome. Thanks for the questions.
Consul Fusillo?
Thanks for all you do. I've got nothing more to add.
Is Consul Honan online?
Consul Honan is on.
Does Consul Honan have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
All right. And again, I'll just, Consul Aiello?
I just want to follow up on what John said. So I fully agree on the not trying to add the fees in to do capital recovery and capital investment. I think that would drive the costs out of there, but, and I think it's our job here to try to figure out how to allocate capital dollars to, you know, all the things that need to be done. What's important for us to know, though, is, because the parks are used by sort of everybody, and then there's your programs, right? So unfair to sort of burden you with sort of fixing things that I use and don't pay for, right? But do you formally, when we get to budget season, do you have a list of capital improvements in the parks in which you operate, in the facilities within you operate, that you then provide instead of capital budgeting process so that, you may or may not get them, but at least...
Yeah, well, we have some stuff on the list, I think we gave this year to Tony.
Okay.
But I will tell you, years ago when I put it in, not that it was fault in this room or anything, it always kind of got pushed aside.
Sure.
So you just get frustrated with it and then pursued it, like, I probably should've.
Yeah.
You know? But it was always seen to be last, and then there's police cars, and there's stuff that needs to be done again. But when we were putting it on, I think nothing ever got done, and it would even carry over into the next year sometime. This is different now this year.
Yeah.
So we have some stuff listed there. And we have some stuff that we got planned for July first that we're going to, you know, get into the fiscal year, get some stuff done.
Yeah, no, that's great, and I think it's important for you to keep your advocacy up and keep pushing.
You've got to keep putting it down there so you see it, and my own self, I've got to push it more.
Yeah, no, I think, and we need that push from you so that we're sort of understanding, and that would be helpful.
That doesn't happen enough.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you guys again. I'll just remind everyone that it wasn't that long, I think it was fifteen years ago, that the town was subsidizing Parks and Rec at a hundred thousand dollars a year. And, you know, we told Sean he has to do it on his own, and he did. And recently, we've had a much smaller subsidy, especially considering the cost of living increases over the last eighteen years. So it's kudos to Sean and his staff for that. But, and to Consul Aiello's point also, I think we are getting to the point now where we're looking, instead of waiting for something to break and then fix it, having a system in place where we're looking at the top park and saying, okay, that needs to be done from soup to nuts, and then we're looking. But, you know, and again, just with the pickleball courts, which are getting incredible use, the basketball courts always get unbelievable use, the amount of tennis courts we have in the town now is fantastic.
You're now getting calls, why did we only do three courts?
Of course, and that's what's going to happen.
So we're working on that for the next...
Raise the fees on all those old projects.
We can get the fourth court that lasts about the fifth.
I want to thank both, I want to thank you for coming, Jesse, and thank you Sean for all you do. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask the council to take a few items out of order. We have some people here that have other obligations. So what the council's... Motion by Consul DeMarco, second by Consul Fusillo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the ayes have it. First, I would like to ask our Veterans Agent Phil to come up. Phil, everyone who's doing an incredible job, and I will say, just to get off-topic for one second, the bench ceremony last night to honor David Greener and Mona Cooper was incredible, and I thank you and Richard Honan for all you do for that, and that was just a fantastic dedication and just a living, a long tribute that will stand there for the test of time. So thank you for that, Phil.
Thank you very much.
And there was a World War II vet, and we...
Handouts for you folks.
Thank you. Phil?
First page is the request. The second page is his character of discharge and why he was discharged. All right. To my fellow veteran.
Thank you.
So let me give you a little background on this situation. This gentleman here, Mr. Maikew, was in the Merchant Marines, and because the military required his services at age forty-one, he was activated into the Navy. He went to, he was on the USS Meredith. He was across from Normandy Beach on June sixth, nineteen forty-four, when the Meredith hit a mine. Two days later, Mr. Maikew died of his injuries, and the second page of that, you'll see KIA. That means killed in action. That's the character of his discharge. He left a wife at thirty-three Sewol Ave with five small children. Somehow, and I'm not here to blame anybody or whatever, his daughter, his granddaughter, which is the first page, requested in 2017 for a flagpole, not a flagpole, a street-corner pole with a gold star that symbolizes killed in action, to be put at thirty-three Sewol Ave or on or about, you know, Highland and Sewol. Somehow, the paperwork got lost. I found the paperwork. I went to Detective Carter. He got me the woman's address and phone number. I called her. Seventy-nine years to the day, her great-grandfather or her grandfather died was the day I called. This woman started crying on the phone uncontrollably. She said, I thought the town of Winthrop had just forgotten us. I never thought it was going to happen. I did this for my mother. Unfortunately, her mother died last year. That sort of stuff makes us look bad, so what I'm here today for is to request, because there is one surviving sibling of that man. She's eighty-six years old, she's in very poor health. It's the woman who made this request's aunt. One surviving relative. Time's against us. I want to have you folks in the most expeditious manner approve this so I can get this signpost put up for her. This gentleman is buried in England, and there's no greater price than a family can pay is when their relative is killed in action. And these folks suffered in nineteen forty-four, and they also suffered when this paperwork was misplaced. So I ask you, as a committee, in the most expeditious fashion as you can, to vote on this, get me some sort of answer, and I will tell you that I cheated a little bit. I already had the memorial sign made with the gold star. And so I can contact this woman, and she can gather her family and that elderly child to come out to Sewol Ave and see us put in that signpost and that gold star. That's what brought me here tonight.
Well, Phil, we thank you again, and I would ask, by unanimous acclamation of the council right now, that we approve this and get this done in as expeditious a way as we can with our blessings to her and her family.
Thank you very much.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Consul Aiello, moved second by Consul DeMarco. All those in favor say aye.
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 And no, the ayes have it unanimously. Thank you very much for all you do again, and our best as a family, and let us know[1708.91] And let us know when we will be there.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
I'll see you, I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
On Hawaii.
Have a good time. Thank you all.
And the second item, which we were taking out of order is, I put this on the, on the agenda a couple of meetings ago. And we had a TSAC recommendation back a handful of years ago discussing Locust Street, Almont Street and those, and the potential one ways and traffic congestion, parking and such. And we had recommendations which the council never voted on at the time. And I've received, as we all have, a few other emails concerning that. And I thought it would be good to bring it up again. So I've asked TSAC representatives to come here to possibly go over exactly, because the council has changed, go over what the recommendations were. And if we still feel those recommendations, I know this was discussed at a recent TSAC meeting also, if we still feel comfortable with those recommendations. And it's something that I think the council needs to discuss and take a serious look at and vote on, not tonight, at a subsequent meeting. So I'm not sure who would like to speak on behalf of TSAC. Well, we'll start with DPW Director Calla.
Sure, good evening, everybody. So yeah, so we've taken this situation up on numerous reasons. And each time, we've come back to the same recommendation, which I truly believe is the right recommendation. Neither one of those roads, neither Almont Street nor Locust Street accommodates two-way traffic with parking on both sides, which is what the condition is there right now. Our recommendation has been and remains a change in the roadways to one-way travel. Almont Street between Revere Street and Cross, travel in that direction from Revere Street towards Cross. Cross remaining a two-way roadway. I do think we may want to discuss further if parking should be removed from one side of Cross Street because the width of Cross Street really still doesn't accommodate two-way traffic with parking on both sides. We do understand and we're all very conscious of the need for parking. So we kept Cross Street alone and have Locust Street turned into a one-way street between Cross and Revere Street going in the opposite direction. The majority of the issue on those roadways, we left the lower parts of Almont and Locust alone. They still don't really meet the width requirement of two-way travel and they certainly don't meet the width requirements of two-way travel and parking on both sides. But we've all witnessed and we all are in agreement that the bulk of the problem there is on the ends of both Almont and Locust between Cross Street and Revere Street.
So there was some discussion from some of the residents of the area that they wanted to flip the recommendation. Almont heading to Revere Street, Locust going towards Cross. If the council were to go in that direction, it sort of defeats the purpose, but forces traffic into the school traffic and forces traffic out of Almont Street into the school traffic. So our recommendation is Almont Street from Revere to Cross, Locust Street from Cross to Revere. And as the department is responsible for the vehicles at town in emergency situations getting out there, it's, everybody I'm sure has witnessed, especially in the mornings, Almont and Locust Street, traffic, cars trying to back out because it becomes a game of, once somebody has to back out. And sometimes you get two or three cars, log jams stacked up trying to get out. And our recommendation is, like we stated, one-way traffic.
We would still keep it in effect too, that there be no left turn after Revere Street onto Almont during the morning, opening up the school and closing in the afternoon, which we've been doing for quite some time. And, you know, after discussing this twice now with the committee, I just kind of mentioned it to the chief, who would have been here this evening, but he's on his anniversary. So I had other important things to do. But yeah, so I think they write the same exact recommendation we made over 20 years ago when this was discussed. So this has been certainly floating around for a while. My understanding is, you know, as much of an inconvenience as people, I don't, if you drive up and down that street, it's a little scary actually.
Oh, thank you Chief Wiley and Deputy Chief Goodwin, as well as Director Calla. And just for everybody to understand, I think from Cross Street down, both Locust and Almont, again, as Director Calla said, might not be wide enough for the accommodations. They are a little wide. I think they are close to 28 feet now down near the end and where they're close to the 22 or 24 maybe at the best down there, Revere Street. So we appreciate your feedback. And again, I don't, I don't believe...
Mr. President, can I just make a point?
Yes.
So Director Calla, along with Jim and Bella Lisa, because we get, these come in frequently from other various parts of the town, right? We came up with kind of a guideline on measurements on how to respond to these. We have a chart that kind of is what we're going by. In the mitigating circumstances, certainly we would have the consensus of opinion, right? But, you know, this street just makes the recommended roadway widths for one-way traffic with parking on both sides. You do the measurements, you know, it fits the logic of decision making.
And I understand, and I know Mike does an incredible amount of work on all this stuff and is incredible at what he does. And, you know, it's a very small town and the streets are very narrow and, you know, potentially, there's a lot of potential changes that have to take place and we have to take them, I don't think we have to take them in a group. I think we have to look at them individually. But again, we thank you for your recommendations. But I thought it was important to bring you guys in because I think, you know, I don't, and I'm not sure if any of the members were here when we last discussed it, any of the current members of the council. And, you know, I would like to send this to public safety and come back with a recommendation to the council in the, at our next meeting, if at all possible. But if any, if any of the consulates have any questions, Consul Aiello.
Wasn't here when it was previously discussed. So the process, just want to make sure I understand the process and sort of when do we have outreach to the community along those two streets? It goes to public safety, they come back with a recommendation, and then we hold a public hearing around the issue?
Yeah, we would definitely have a public hearing.
Okay, so that's the sequence.
Oh, yeah, we would not discount.
Yeah, and Bob is public safety, so we'll have to see if we can skip something before the next one.
You have three weeks, almost more. We'll go, Consul Damaco, anything?
I, I was actually here, so...
I just had a procedural question. I know before rules and ordinance took up some one ways and things like that, does that need to go through them as well?
Yes, eventually. We could have a joint meeting. And I think that some of the members are the same with rules and...
I would just...
Yeah, we could make it a joint meeting, yes.
Joint meetings, good.
Consul Martin?
I just had two quick questions. Can you reiterate, Deputy Chief Goodwin, the no left turn? And the second part of the question would be, wouldn't it be easier in terms of signage for you? And just for the clarity of understanding what's right and wrong on those two streets, to just make it one-way, the full length, all the way to, you know, Veterans or Shirley? I think it's Shirley at the end of those.
Veterans.
Veterans, is it Veterans?
Yeah.
Yeah. So why, couldn't it be easier just to make it for all the citizens to know that it's one-way, both the whole length?
I mean, you could, you could do it that way if that was the council's choice. We just felt as a committee that the need, it wasn't imperative that the lower parts of those streets change direction. We felt that they manage as a two-way. They're not nearly as congested as the ends of Almont and Locust between Cross and Revere. Signage, it would just be, you know, yeah, might be a bit more signage, but, you know. Again, we weren't trying to turn the neighborhood upside down. We're just trying to make it safe.
I mean, it's a no-brainer to me. This has been something I've been dealing with since I've been here. My parents live on Locust, so, yeah, it's a no-brainer. This needs to happen. The other thing, I didn't understand the left, who's...
The morning of the school, there's opening and there's a lot of traffic. We don't allow a left-hand turn on off of Revere Street onto Almont because it creates a backlog of the traffic coming.
Oh, I see, I see, yeah.
And that would tend to be the practice.
That makes sense, too.
They have to walk to Shirley and come around.
Got it, thank you.
Consul Fusillo? Consul Honan?
Yeah, that makes sense.
No, I don't have anything. I attended the TSAC meeting, so it was clear from the discussion.
All right, thank you. And Consul Aiello has a follow-up, but I would just ask one. Again, we've been talking about this for a long time, which we all admitted. Do you have any concerns, potential concerns, if this was to pass with the TIP project in terms of starting it after the TIP project, before the TIP project? Do you think that has any impact on this at all?
I think the TIP project is gonna be, it's gonna, it's gonna cause issues on Revere Street regardless.
Right.
You know, it's gonna be a major construction, you know, it's gonna be daytime construction. So it's gonna have its, certainly its setbacks. I don't, I think I would implement it sooner than later and let everybody get used to it.
Well, I do agree. I think it's important to implement, whatever it be, in the summertime when there is no school, to give people the opportunity to get used to the situation and not start it September. Consul Aiello?
Yeah, just a question for the police chief on going all the way to Veterans. I worry that people who are gonna end up coming up to Veterans, take a left, take a left. That's a much higher speed road than Cross Street, which has a couple of stop signs in. So it may be a good idea, but I think it's important to sort of look at the average speeds of people coming up and down Veterans and whether that left-left can safely happen there.
I could certainly put it...
I think Cross is safer.
Right, you talked about the speeds by the last time you spoke.
Yeah, yeah.
You certainly could put that out there and collect some data. Veterans Row, I'd probably even have it because Veterans Row is such a busy street, so I could probably provide...
A lot of people coming, coming from trade winds of, you know, that whole area, taking that right, tends to sort of be coming down a hill and coming down a little fast and then people try to take a left and a left and...
Well, thank you for your time. We will set up and we will advertise for a public hearing on the 18th, Denise. And we will have a subcommittee meeting, a joint meeting in the meantime. Thank you very much. And thank you for taking the time.
The split's not working.
The other one's on, but it's not working. It doesn't seem to be working.
We're doing it.
All right. We'll now open up for public comment.
Here, one support.
All right, yes, Suzanne.
I just had a question about how many different sources do we have in reference to per person?
Well, Paxton Rec has, has a small allocation from the town, which we've started the last couple of years. They also have grants from Massport. That's basically, yes.
Is there, are there...
In use of these, obviously.
Have we explored other opportunities or is that...
In terms of grants or...
Yeah, exactly.
No, I know Sean does look at other opportunities in terms of grants. But yes, you're always, we're always looking for grants. It's hard to, you know, like Sean said, it's hard to compete in certain areas when you're looking at a zero opportunity for a child to go in and take some summer school programs and such that are being offered at the school. But then again, in reverse, when you look at a $400 cost for a summer program and you look at that as an hourly cost, it's miniscule. But it's still $400, which is a lot of money. So, but yes, I do think he pursues grants actively and not just him and his staff. Yes?
Karen Travis, precinct two. Thank you for that little summary we just had. I wonder if that's gonna be posted, first of all, on the town.
Yeah, we can get that up on the website, sure.
Um, I think what the council needs to understand too is that Sean works out of a building that is probably open in 1965. And he's the only person in that building. And also the gymnasium opened in 1955, believe it or not. I go there because I was in high school. I think we need to look at these things and really take another long look at where we can find a permanent home for Sean off of Paxton Rec. I know it's been done. I know that people have looked at it. I did a walkthrough with the council president a few years ago. We did a walkthrough to see if we could do something with the gymnasium and make that the home of Paxton Rec. But it just didn't come to be. They looked at the Methodist Church. They looked at several other places. He does a fantastic job as far as I can see. $400 for that summer program for eight weeks. That's $50 a week. That's $10 a day. I know it's only 8:30 to 12:30 or something like that. But that's great for those kids. And I don't know what the other programs cost. I don't know what 21st Century costs. I don't know what FKO costs. And the other programs he was talking about as far as the school's concerned, those are kids that need the added help at, at the end of the school year so they go to summer school. And that's why it's free, which is great. But I did, when Sean came to the Finance Commission, he talked about a new program that he was starting this year, and I'm not sure it was implemented. The kids that were going to summer school, he was gonna let them offer a fee, come on Fridays to him. And then when summer school was over, they could just pick up with the program, which I think is great. You know, he's done a terrific job over the years. And I, the fire station, we need a new fire station. We need a new police station. And Sean needs a home. And I don't know where it's gonna be. I don't ask him because I don't, I don't know what's available in town. It seems like there's a lot of empty places. But whether the town can afford that or not, I don't know.
I did mention a few meetings ago, and we'll continue to talk about the middle school site and my thoughts on what potentially would go there. And it, you know, what we're looking at has a home for Paxton Rec. And that was a main key for that, for my thoughts.
I'm glad to hear that.
And we'll be discussing it further. But yes, they definitely do need a home. I mean, Sean had a home for years on the top of the E.B. Newton, which again was not...
Yeah, well, we hear the old church building.
Right.
We lost that.
So none of the homes have been perfect in any way, shape or form. And I think he's done a remarkable job in the, in the conditions that he's had. But, you know, it's extremely important for these kids just to get social time together and off the cell phones and off the electronic devices and everything else. But I think it's, it's a great opportunity for kids. And the summer programs, very well known around the town, very well received. Thank you. Any other public comment? Mr. Schmidt?
Bill Schmidt, precinct five. One curious comment. Why did they not put the fall in spring and, and spring together as opposed to breaking them up separately?
I think, it is a good point. I'm assuming they did it because those are during school year. And the summer program is unique because it's the one program that's out of the school year. So I think that's what he was doing.
I was just wondering, because maybe...
Yeah, I would assume that that's...
Maybe they caused a different, I don't know. Are they both...
I would assume those are just, you know, programs during the school, school year.
I'm gonna add a tennis player. I paid, I think, $10 when I got my key. We don't pay anything else. A lot of people play. So I don't know if there's some way voluntarily to raise money for your school and stuff because a lot of these, and I would say for the pickleball people too, this usage there, we're getting a tremendous usage for virtually nothing. So I don't know if there's a way to get some people who are using the facilities somehow maybe voluntarily. I don't know, but it's something. But that's not the major points I want to talk about was kind of just kind of a public process. I know you guys are gonna have some big decisions coming up. Old middle school site, fire station, maybe housing. I don't know what the requirement is based on what the MDTA requirement is, legislation. I was curious what the public process is going to be to have input into those decisions. Because I think those are significant decisions that there should be an open process that we see how they're being done. Are there RFPs, whatever else under those requirements? When you have to do those kinds of things. So I would just urge the council to include the public on these processes.
Thank you. Well, I will say, any potential public safety, fire, police, whatever it happens to be, will, will obviously have an incredible amount of public disclosures and meetings and public hearings and such because ultimately, they pay for it. So nothing's gonna be done without input from the public. Thank you. Mr. Dowd?
As far as public input, I think the process starts right in this room. I questioned the microphones last month that I couldn't be heard on the reruns of, I think I talked to somebody.
We did address that, and my understanding is they were, they've been working well since.
It seems as though nothing's working in this room right now. That's why I'm bringing up the topic. On the WCAT, Tony, we can't hear what you say. The microphone's not in front of you and you talk rapidly. So if you put the microphone in front of you, maybe we could understand a little bit better. And I'm, I'm gonna say since 2014 to date, I consider town politics, I went for it to be in the dark ages. First they passed the... First, they passed the ordinance in two thousand fourteen to raise the height of buildings in the Center Business District to forty-eight feet, and then with no provision for parking. I believe that's still on the books now. And this building down the center that's gonna come for sale is gonna really show what can happen to the Center Business District when an outside entity buys it and does what they want with that piece of property. So I, I'd like this council to include people in this process. And I think the best way to include people in this process of government is to have minutes of all these committees, subcommittees, boards, emissions. You just can't find minutes in this town. I asked the clerk for the minutes to, the three committee minutes in the, on a monthly basis, and I asked that over two months ago. I believe the rule is after a meeting, if you request the minutes of the meeting, you're supposed to have them within ten days. Not positive. It might be two weeks, but it certainly isn't two months. So in order to include everybody in the town, and it's basically the same type of people that show up here on a weekly basis. I don't see any inclusion here. I mean, invite your friends to get people involved. People are not involved because they don't know. If they wanna know something, you're supposed to go to the town, the, the minutes for the committee and find out what happened at that meeting. Well, there's no minutes. It's, it's a big deal. I hope someone takes that up with whoever wants to understand it, and that the people understand where are the minutes. It used to be at a town's selectman meeting that the cassette player was at the front desk midway through, they changed the cassette, and then they'd write the, the minutes out. It was as simple as that. And everybody knew what was said at the selectmen's meeting. I, I know it's a different time and era. But we're not including everybody in the town because of the situation with the minutes. I hope someone brings this to light, and I hope someone corrects it. There's one more thing. Oh. The television doesn't work. The air conditioning doesn't work. The microphones sometimes don't work. The cameras sometime, oh, after I asked about the, the microphones not picking up the comments, the next week, you couldn't see the people that were talking for the next two weeks after that. So it seems to be a little comedy of errors here. I hope, who pays for this room to be run? Does WCAT spent a lot of money up the street in the past year? All their cameras work, all their microphones work, et cetera. Are they in charge of the cameras in this room, monitors in this room? Or is the town hall in charge of what happens in this room as far as WC promoting this on, on television? Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say, compare, you talked about the selectmen's minutes. Selectmen are, you know, basically the closest thing we have to the council, and our minutes are posted all the time. Subcommittee minutes should be posted. Absolutely a hundred percent agree with you. And there should not be deletions from there, or there shouldn't be missing minutes. Minutes should be available at, after the prior meeting, so the minutes can be approved and they're available, same with the council. And I have looked on many of the council's subcommittees and such, and you will see the council's subcommittee and you will see the minutes. If there are minutes that are missing, we will look into that.
Well, certainly minutes missing from the three committee that I requested two months ago.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment? Anyone on Zoom? Correspondence, Denise?
I have none. Thank you.
Anyone else? Committee reports. I don't believe there were any. A school department report. There was a school committee meeting last night. I was unable to attend. I was at the bench dedication. My understanding is the, what they were discussing was end of year transfers and such. The kids have been out of school. We are fortunate again to have school committee woman Swope here. If there's anything I missed or anything of importance that you'd like to add.
The budget?
Yes.
No, I mean, we voted on the budget.
Okay. Well, thank you. And that's more of a, a formal, an informal thing, so to speak. I mean, the budget was approved by the council, and it was not the budget that was voted on originally by the school committee, and they did accept the budget that was proposed by the town, and we thank them for that. Town manager's report.
Thank you. Just wanted to give a brief update on the ferry. The MBTA will be taking it over on July fifth, right after the Fourth of July holiday. Because we have it for an extra few days, we are going to run service this weekend. There will be service on Saturday and Sunday. There'll be no service on Monday the third or the holiday the fourth. And then the MBTA, you know, through Hornblower, will be taking it over and running it as of the fifth. The Revere Street tip project update. I know we've received some correspondence and phone calls with regard to the night work and some complaints. You know, we have heard them. We've asked, talked to the contractors about some concerns, but we were able to, because of the progress they made, we were able to. This will be the last week of the night work. They're gonna be moving to days after that. So they'll finish up Thursday night, and then starting after the Fourth of July holiday, they'll be switching over to days to get the work done back towards Revere Street. And then, you know, work their way back up when we have to try to come up with a plan where we can do the drainage work during the daytime, but more to follow on that. We're gonna basically be able to go down to Revere Street, finish up the water main work, and then we'll start on the drainage work that we need to do. And with that, I've got just some updates when we get to the Airbnb stuff later, but it'll certainly be available to answer any questions that the council may have.
And I will just take this time to remind everyone that as of July fifth, the Somnath Tunnel will be closed all from July fifth through August thirty-first. Again, the MBTA, the Blue Line, will be running with extra service, and the service will be free of charge. Parking will be at a reduced rate, and the ferry will be at a reduced rate of two dollars and forty cents. I don't know, anything I could say that's gonna make this more palatable or not. It's going to be a miserable situation for two months. And then they're going back to weekends, and then following July and August of next year, we'll be in the same boat, so to speak. And then I, I believe the weekends will then come back until the spring of, or the early, late winter of twenty twenty-five. And that should be the end of it. And then they'll start another tunnel or something. But anyway, it's, you know, there's nothing that's gonna be easy to be said. Just people be aware of it, cognizant of it, that, you know, usually things are never as bad as you think they're gonna be. I can't imagine this being one of those situations. You know, I guess patience is a virtue, and we have to leave early, come home later, and, and stay in Winter, Sean. Questions for town manager, Councilor Yello?
First, I wanna just really, really emphasize the great work that the town manager did on the ferry with the team.
Again, team effort, but yeah.
All of us know.
Yeah.
Not an easy organization to work with, but you stayed with it. And I think it's really momentous for, not just for the mobility during the tunnel shutdown, but I think the permanent mobility for this town. As East Boston gets more congested, Suffolk Downs gets built up. They're talking about a haul road that's gonna let the rest of McClellan Highway get more intensely developed. It's gonna be more and more of a struggle to get out of this town for those who wanna get to the Blue Line, to get into East Boston, et cetera. So having a ferry very much could be a lifesaver, and I think it's important to get the word out and have people start using it and encourage our friends to use it for their mobility into the city. Because we've got a two-year deal with a couple of options, one of which is to turn it into a permanent MBTA-run facility. But if we don't use it, it'll, it'll, you know, we'll get the boat back, and they'll say, thank you very much. So we're really on a trial period, and we really ought to encourage utilization of that, particularly during the two dollars and forty cent period. It's a, it's a real lifesaver. And Tony's now working on an M ticket, which is the ticket that's used for, same ticket's used for the Hingham Ferry, used for commuter rail. It allows for some transfers when you get into Boston. That's probably a month, month and a half away.
Yeah.
Weekend service, Hornblower is like us, looking for captains, but they have a, they're a national organization. They have much better benefits. They're more likely to capture staff to run weekend service for us and late at night service. So I think we're, we're on the way hopefully to more improved service, backup boats in case something happens to the, the singular boat that we've got. So hats off. I mean, I think it's a, it's a great change in sort of the mobility for Winter people, so.
And just in, you know, Councilor Yello's suggestion and many others, like, we're gonna have, you know, biweekly meetings with the MBTA. We're not gonna let this just, though we signed the lease and we're just backing off, because we wanna make sure we push for the weekend service. We wanna make sure we're, you know, monitoring ridership and even minor changes to the service, you know, whether it's, you know, letting Hingham and Hull pick up Quincy, and then we can focus more on commuting, things like that. Like, those are all being talked about and pushed forward, so we keep the pressure on. So we're gonna keep going on.
That's great. And maybe, I, I, I think we're gonna be doing some T-SAC stuff, but maybe, and I missed the last meeting. There were three sort of transportation-oriented things that we had talked about in the past. One was trying to get a budget on the twenty-five percent design for that Main Street, Pleasant Street, you know, when you come from the Belle Isle Bridge. Let me go through all three, and then you can give a report. The second was, T-SAC had said they were gonna recommend to, the meeting that Tracy and I were at, to, to you a couple of things. One is for a study of the intersection of Winter Street, Pleasant, and Washington for potentially, for reconfiguration of that intersection and potentially a signalized intersection. And then short-term and, and more medium-term solutions to the, the curve at Pleasant Street, where we've had a number of vehicles drive onto private property and endangering not just property, but people's lives as well. So, and you can do it when T-SAC's up, or you can do it now?
No, the last one is in process. I know Director Calla had ordered the flashing corner signs.
The signs actually showed up yesterday afternoon.
These are the eight signs?
These are.
No.
Oh, this is, oh, just for this corner?
The flashing corner for Pleasant Street.
For the corner, just for the corner, okay.
Two flashing curb signs from each direction, and then we have the, the Chevrons, two Chevron blinking signs at the actual curb.
Great.
I'm working with DeLuca Fence on a quote for wooden guide rail also around that curb.
Yeah, that's awesome. Great, great.
And then, as you know, we've got the paving being offered by MS DOT. That's gonna repave that. The benefit, as you talked about the first question, with regard to the intersection at Washington, I think Winter and Pleasant there.
Winter, Washington, Pleasant, yeah.
Right in that area. That was actually identified on our Complete Streets program years ago, so it is eligible for that grant funding. So we're gonna apply for the grant this fall. And I'm working with Rachel on that application. So we're gonna put in for, not only design money to start, but then potentially construction money down the road. So the fact that it was identified in that original plan allows us to move forward and ask for that money.
Okay. Is it that the Washington Pleasant, or was that the?
Washington Pleasant, Winter, that one.
Winter, that one, okay. And then what about Main Street, Pleasant Street that Jim's talked about a couple of times, coming off the Belle Isle Bridge?
Yeah, that's part of the next phase, the next tip project. That'll be addressed in there.
And we're gonna fund the twenty-five percent.
We are waiting for the final numbers to find out what twenty-five percent's gonna be, and then we're gonna, you know, talk to the council. So yeah, we're waiting on the, the estimates.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, real quick, and I'm biased on this because I live on Revere Street, but, and I don't know if this question is for you or Director Calla. They've taken so many parking spaces on Revere Street, and the signs say no parking seven to five, and it's like through September or something like that on the signs. I'm wondering if there's a way we could shorten that and just go, you're talking to somebody who had somebody, had a police officer ring his doorbell seven o'clock this morning to move his car. So, you know, there's not a lot of parking down there. I don't know, not everybody gets up before seven. Maybe make it nine to five instead. I, I don't know. I don't know what the deal is, but is there any way we could increase parking space on Revere Street at the current point?
Very, very difficult to accomplish what we need to accomplish.
Okay.
And it's not, those aren't even town projects, but they're projects being done for the town.
Yeah.
To, to allow us to, to do the tip project.
Yeah, I know the work needs to get done. Yeah, yeah.
You have approximately sixteen hundred feet of gas bane being installed right now. And you have United Civil removing the direct area cable and starting to redo curving sidewalks and street work so that they're off the road by October timeframe.
Okay.
You had two, two big operations kind of working in Houston over there, and then we got Cardillo now on the, on the other side, you know, trying to. Everything's evolving for the tip project, so.
Okay.
You know, they're accommodating the town with getting what they need to get done. I don't see how we can, how we can, we, if, if we restrict them, it's gonna go into next year.
Got you. We don't wanna slow down the project.
And that's where we're at.
Okay.
And while certainly, you know, I know you got woken up this morning, but we've had a few people reach out with accessibility issues, things like that. And, you know, we're obviously working with them, making accommodations and things like that.
I'm glad they didn't tow my car. They rang my doorbell. So, you know what I mean? It is what it is. I just, it is, I mean, people are gonna complain. It's just what it is. Yeah.
Councilor Valcha. Thank you. Just a couple of things. While we're talking about all these T-SAC things, I just thought I should bring up that Shirley Street really needs some attention as we're coming into the summer. I know it's come up a few times, but Delby's Corner down to Deer Island, there's speed issues, there's parking issues, safety issues. So I know these central arteries affect more people, and there's a cost-benefit thing, but we really need to look at that going into the busiest time of year down there. And then also for the Revere Street, I've seen the videos. It's very loud, very disruptive for residents overnight. But have we talked to the businesses on Crest Ave about the daywork shifting over there?
We're gonna, we're going to. Like, right now, we're coming off of Crest, going back to Revere, so there won't be any disruptions right now. I'm talking about later when we get back for the drainage work. Yeah, we're gonna have, reach out to, you know, Jackson and others and, you know, work it. There's a small, that, you know, business corridor there is, is part of it, and we don't wanna, you know, disrupt it. But now that we're done with water main work and it's just drainage work, we might be able to, you know, keep a lane open and make it a little more accommodating, so. Director Calla and I and Chief Delanti were working on that and come up with a plan, so.
They function at different times. There's just a wide variety of businesses there. Thank you.
Councilor Metzger. Thank you, Council President. Thanks, Tony. And I know it's been a busy timeframe with a lot of events, but you keep showing up and you keep having a smile on your face, and that Pride Potluck meal was really nice. Thanks for contributing for that. And it's just great to see so many things going on. I did have a couple of quick questions. I had mentioned previously an idea that as part of the kind of inclusion with the rest of the town for some of these proposed developments, to have the agendas from the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board, all the proposed developments and exclusions to be put on the town manager's blog with the possibility of also links to the zoning requirements for each type of zone so that people don't feel as though they're in the dark ages, that they're actually part of rules that are being maintained and upheld, and that we're getting stricter and tighter, not more loose and lenient.
Yep, absolutely. And I work with Larissa on that. She's off this week, so it'll be coming down the pike in the future. And we're also looking at ways to improve our social media presence with programs like Canva and things like that to have a more updated process, like, you know, week in review, update of all the meetings, things like that. So like you said, we don't anticipate how everybody gets their news media, but trying to get those, you know, agendas and things that are going on in the town through multiple venues to, you know, keep the public informed.
That's great. And I'm looking forward to seeing that, because I like to stand up on that too and just to know what's happening. But as far as getting the word out regarding the ferry, you know, I think that is a great asset and a resource that we would love to keep the MBTA to stay on top of that indefinitely. Is there something that we can do at a town level, just to throw a little bit of online money, a little bit of, I don't know. I mean, I'm just curious about getting the word out. Is that something you lean on MBTA for?
MBTA's doing it. We're gonna get the word out. Like you said, in the blog, we're gonna, you know, keep doing the schedule, keep working with the MBTA. I would just say, like Councilor Yello said, just, you know, use the ferry. Get on it, take it to Boston, keep the ridership numbers up, because that's what's really gonna dictate the future and, you know, make sure the numbers, you know, the costs and the expense, you know, the revenue versus the expenses, right? They gotta make sure they're either, you know, making money or breaking even, so we gotta make sure we use it.
Another idea I had, I wasn't sure about whether this has been discussed already with DPW or not, or what the possibility of this is. But we did get some correspondence recently about public walkways, and, and there has been some, like on Sagamore, I guess kids are hanging out, someone fell. There's a woman volunteered to clean up the shrubbery, and I guess my, it's more of a question more than it is anything else than a suggestion. What is the responsibility? Is it the responsibility of the citizens that own property on sidewalks and public walkways to trim their hedges? Or is it the town's responsibility to make sure that those pathways, including? Or is it the town's responsibility to make sure that those pathways, including sidewalks and public side... 'Cause I lumped them together. Aren't they the same thing?
Sidewalks and walkways, if private property shrubs overhang in a sidewalk or a walkway, it's the responsibility of the homeowner.
And so who gets, I mean, how does that, homeowner?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Yeah, which would be special services would have to go over and give them a notice to trim back their bushes. Happens with land of sight, there's certain corners when things grow too high.
Right.
You know, they do do it, but that's what...
So just if you, if I'm going for a bike rider, I see something that's a little bit hard to even...
You can report it to DPW, and I'll pass it, or you can report it directly to special services.
Straight to, okay. Very good. But that's not something we can add in terms of the DPW's, like, routine, like, bi-monthly review, or like a once at the beginning of the spring to check the side?
We don't have the capacity.
Not right now, okay. Weed whacker, shrubbery, stuff like that?
Yeah, we're struggling just to do our green space.
Got it.
And we, 52 acres a week we do.
Okay, appreciate it.
Counsel Pacilla?
Counsel Honig? All right.
I don't have anything, no.
Thank you. All right, CDICR meeting?
Yeah, it was a, met, like I said, on June 14th. It was a good meeting, a relatively short meeting, a lot of updates on the upcoming events. You know, the bench dedication, the Pride Potluck, you know, the flag raising, things like that, recap on that. Discussion of a few incidents at the schools, they wanted some updates on and things like that. But overall, good meeting, looking forward to, moving forward. There was also a discussion on membership. We had a few members, Father Walter was getting off, and I think that was his last meeting. And then we had one or two other openings. I think there might have been one or two people that put in their application.
Yep.
The CDICR, yeah. So we've got a few, you know, membership things going on. So looking forward to getting some new members there and working. In the next meeting, we'll talk about, you know, upcoming projects and things they wanna do in the future.
All right, thank you. Moving on to old business, TSAC, we already did, Winthrop Beach access points. We talked today, had an electronic conversation with Representative DCR, who is still working on it. And we informed them that if we don't hear anything in the next couple of days, we're taking it upon ourselves to open the site and build a safe stairway for access for our residents. MBTA changes, again Herman Street to Walden Street will initiate on December 1? Yeah, December, July 1?
July, yeah.
The MBTA is getting signage underway. They have had signage on Herman Street for the last couple of weeks, notifying people of the change. We will monitor the change and see how it goes, and we think it's going to be very fruitful. Public walkway again on Herman Street, going towards Short Street is something that, you know, I've had on the agenda. I know Counsel Munson brought up public walkways, and it's still in committee now that we're gonna take a look and try to prioritize the need. But I feel this is one that's very ripe for taking care of with the bus change, enabling people to walk down to Walden Street from Herman Street in a safe, convenient way. So I know we're in the process of looking at bids and the cost to, to, to put that walkway into a safe condition. And we hope to be here and back maybe at our next council meeting. And just again, updates on middle school situation. It's an ongoing process. We have some ideas. Hopefully, we will be coming back with some sort of presentation. Maybe the second meeting in July, or the first meeting in August, 'cause I believe there is one meeting in July. So stay tuned. I think it will be very exciting, and I think the town will benefit greatly from the proposal. New business, we have a motion that the Town Council appropriate from Water and Sewer Capital Stabilization Fund, the amount of $174,062 to a new special article in the Water Sewer Fund to provide additional funding for the PRV project, for which bids come in higher than the amount of the SRF loan or take any other action relative thereto. We are sending that to Finance and hope to have a report back at our next meeting. Airbnb ordinance review. Our town attorney, along with the town manager, has been working. I know this council's been looking forward to this. And I will turn it over to Attorney Sipoleta and Manager Moreno.
Mr. President, may I?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
As requested by the council, we're asked to take a look at the Airbnb ordinance and our, you know, our current bylaws, what's allowed, what's not allowed. There's a lot of information there in front of you. Really, what we wanted to talk about tonight with the council was, is, you know, we boiled this down to probably two or three options, right? How you want us to proceed. You know, option one, we know we've got probably a lot of Airbnb, some of them are, you know, a handful have been created legally, but a lot of them, as we see on Airbnb and VRBO, are out there being rented and not, you know, registered with the town or not on our radar. So we've got our option one would be, you know, leave the ordinance as it is, which basically allows for units to be inside, you know, people's homes and things like that, but it has to be owner-occupied. Probably not designed originally for, you know, this kind of a market, you know, in mind when we did that, but that's the ordinance as you have it today. And then we can increase enforcement. As, you know, Councilor Iello asked about third-party vendors, or, you know, right to deal directly with Airbnb and VRBO, we come to find out that there's options there as well to do enforcement. Option number two would be to amend the ordinance, to remove the accessory requirement. And then option three would be amend the ordinance to remove the owner-occupied unit piece. The last option, maybe an additional option, would be establish a short-term rental definition and possibly come up with just an Airbnb or short-term rental bylaw that, you know, the council could consider adding. I guess a bunch of different ways we can go, but I wanted to open up the conversation with that and sort of kick it around and see where the council wants us to go. You know, the third-party vendors, certainly, you know, there's companies like Granicus, our own software company that we use for, you know, open budgeting and also inspectional services through ViewPermit, company called OpenGov. They also, they have a monitoring service they can offer us. In fact, as I spoke before, there's a company that I think Nantucket started using, this company, Granicus, and then actually switched over to OpenGov, 'cause they had issues with this company doing the enforcement. So as far as the other piece of enforcement goes, as we found out, you know, through, actually, our Finance Commission meetings, is the city of Boston had cut a deal directly with Airbnb to add requirements for Boston rentals. Boston has to, if you go on the Airbnb site, in fact, we printed it here, anyone who wants to use a short-term rental 28 days or less has to be registered with the city of Boston, has to meet a bunch of requirements, and then Airbnb won't list the unit or rent the unit until that criteria has been met. Come to find out Airbnb will do that for Winthrop as well. We're still looking to get a contact over at VRBO to ask that question. But we've done a lot of work into this, and, you know, I think this might be the way to go as far, rather than, you know, certainly looking at third-party vendors, but, you know, actually going to the websites and making the requirement and checking the box, and then allowing us to get listings, and then we'll get a list, you know, take a peek at what's out there now. They'll give us all that and work with us on that information, so. But, you know, they're not, it's a balancing act, right? I mean, some of the issues that come up, if you were to lessen the restrictions a little bit, the bigger concern, and I've seen it in other towns, is the VRBOs, right? It's the whole-house rentals. Somebody takes a four-bedroom house and rents it, and you could potentially have two or three families come. Well, two or three families aren't using one or two cars. They're bringing six cars maybe, or maybe more if they've got teenagers, you know. So now you take a single-family home, four-bedroom home in a tight residential neighborhood, say on, you know, Almont or Locust, and they can't accommodate six or seven cars, you know. So those are the kind of things we need to get out of control and think about that and the impact on the neighborhood. So a lot of these, some of these, you know, single units and whatnot, they're coming in and they're, you know, getting into Logan Airport and taking an Uber, where maybe there's no car involved. So, I mean, it's a balancing act on that. But we wanted to kick it around with the council and see which way you want us to go, and you want us to, you know, obviously, if we're gonna change the ordinance, it's gonna involve the Planning Board. We need to have some public hearings, look to change the bylaws. But, you know, there's all sorts of stuff. As far as receiving money goes, we certainly get our room tax now on the few hotel rooms in town, you know, but we're not getting, you know, that additional 6% that we can charge for the short-term rentals. And there's also an ability, as of 7/1/2019, you can charge an additional, on top of the 6% and the 5.7, you can get an additional 3%, which they call a community impact fee. You know, we can charge that as well. We're not currently doing that, 'cause we're not, these arenas aren't registered, you know. Part of the requirements for Boston is they gotta be registered with the MS DOR, and then that allows them to collect taxes and any additional taxes that the city has imposed, so. Certainly, a lot of opportunity to generate some revenue here and do that, but we wanted to, you know, a lot of communities have stayed away from this, you know, for a lot of reasons, but, you know, 'cause it's difficult. Even Boston's having issues with it. So it's really, you know, tackling, it's a great thing, but, you know, we wanna, before we spin our wheels in one direction or the other, obviously, the council, you know, we look for direction from the council, you know, before we proceed.
We will be sending this to rules and ordinance, but we'll take a few questions now. But you also, I know you mentioned Boston. Were we looking at Barnstable, or was it?
Yep, Barnstable, and I'll let her attorney, Jim Sipoleta, weigh in on that. Barnstable certainly came up with a great bylaw. They haven't passed it yet, right? So they're running into the same sort of, you know, probably some concerns and obstacles. But, you know, as far as the bylaw and the proposed bylaw itself, I think was great, if you wanna elaborate on that.
So, taking a look at some of the surrounding communities, and communities that might be similar to Winthrop, both in demographic and location, like Barnstable being sort of a seaport kind of thing, and drawing from that sort of South Shore area, whereas where North Shore and have connection to Boston. We thought that the Town Council of Barnstable had put in quite a bit of work in developing an ordinance that was a little broader, a little more user-friendly than ours. Our ordinance is well-intended when it was done. I think the situation was, maybe it was like pre-Airbnb, but to me, it's a little bit mystifying. The state statute similarly is mystifying, because it has some internal inconsistencies, and our ordinance has some conflicts in definitions with the state statute. And I dare say that that might be the reason why this was pulled back at Barnstable, because a lot of the conversation around that had to do with the ability to generate fees. Because certainly, there is an impact. We can see the impact on our communities simply by the small number of registered and permitted Airbnbs and transient lodging houses. The way that the community impact fee works is similar to what we did back in 2012, is that the Town Council then voted to accept a state statute that would allow us to collect the 6% on the room tax. However, we didn't have any rooms, other than the hotels, that are actually able to be taxed, because our definition doesn't fit with the state definition of what is a taxable room. One of the things that we picked up, Tony and I, looking around the towns, and Boston in particular, Tony looked at some of the more suburban ones, I looked at maybe the suburban ones and the seashore type, is that, you know, you have parking, and, paring before the number, when I was sitting in a different role, before the administrative boards here in town, always would hear, whether it was a case before mine, my case, or somebody else, parking, parking, parking. With it being one of those towns, it just is parking stressed, overly stressed. We get it. And so in an effort to reach some happy medium, that's probably one of the things that we're saying impact fee might go to, might go to, maintaining some of the sidewalks, might go to planting trees, so on and so forth. But it's an important thing for us to have. So there is, at some point along the timeline, some affirmative action that needs to be taken by the town. And that action is to have a vote of the council to accept the provisions of Chapter 63, Section 3A, to impose, to have the ability to impose that 3% community impact. We haven't done that. If you look at the handout, I'm sorry, you're just getting it now, but we were getting this off the press and from the state all the way up to this afternoon. But you look at the back page of that, number 346 is Winthrop. Of course, this is all laid out alphabetically. We thought we'd print a two-sided, not take off the other 51 citizen town, just saving it up. But, and you see that Winthrop in 2009, actually, voted to accept the ordinance. So we do have the ability to have that 6% room tax. If you flip to the front part of that, in the W's, as well, Webster, which is 316, and Wellfleet is 318. In 2019 and 2022, they voted to impose that extra, that additional 3%. So that obviously gets passed on to the user, and it's collected by the operator who then had, by state's after, you have to open up the channel where gas tax can act. And just the way our meals taxes are collected, the room taxes would be collected. DOR would then slice them up, send our share to the town, and we wouldn't have to do anything. And we would just make sure that the registers are all clear and being enforced, and they're kept up to date, and inspections are done. So that's, that's one of the things that needs to be done. The other that Tony and I had talked about, and we've had input from other people around some of the councils, some people on other boards, and it just, you know, involved individuals who are kind of following this. This is the concept of something we don't have. And I would encourage any, anyone looking to maybe be interested in amending the ordinance to take a look at what the state calls a short-term rental. Short-term rentals are room-by-room taxable. So that would guarantee to us that we don't have that. We don't have that in our ordinance, because it's not defined. It's defined in the state statute, but we don't have it in our ordinance. So if you were going to, in fact, our ordinance is actually, and probably not by design, drafted so as to actually preclude any operating transient or lodging or BnBs from being taxed. Because they, without the short-term rental use, if you look at transient, lodging, and bed and breakfast, DOR says those aren't taxable, because you don't hit the ceiling or the floor of four rooms. We can't do more than four rooms. You can tax it if you're a transient lodging establishment, or you're a BnB with more than four rooms. DOR says you can go ahead and tax it. State has 5.7. We've got six, although there is an uncodified amendment floating around in there that says that that six can actually be 6.7, plus your 3%. I don't wanna sound like the same presentation of a bunch of numbers, but, I mean, that's, that's what's keeping us from being able to generate the enforcement capabilities that we need, because I think Tony was on Airbnb last week, and, you know, we got, from Sharon over the Health Department, oh, we got another 15 people saying we have Airbnb, whatever, that we didn't have last week. Who are they? What are they doing? I mean, what do we have, like 12 that actually came forward, or maybe, you know, not more than a dozen, who are actually coming into the town hall, making the application, getting the inspections, paying the license fee, which is minimal, and is under the jurisdiction of inspectional services, which includes the Health Department. All of the other ones are just rogue. Yet, they're taking in money that's untaxed. They're taking up resources that are, you know, at the detriment of the town. So those are the kind of things that, you know, there's a lot of moving parts in this. And so we need to be a little bit careful navigating through sort of all of these little trap doors between the state and our ordinance, to make sure that we line up with what the state gives us as a taxing capability, and also to beef up enforcement, have the, have the power, or have the, maybe the little bit of increased inspectional services involvement on some of these things. And I know they don't have it, but that community, that community impact fee would probably give it to us.
All right. So we would not be wrong to say that there's roughly a dozen or so licensed Airbnb-type units.
I don't think there's more than a dozen.
And there would be roughly, we wouldn't be wrong to say there's probably over 100 that are providing the service. And this is where, you know, this is where, this is why you're here, right? And this is where, you know, this is where, this is why you're here, right? This is why we ask this. And it, it, it becomes enforcement and it becomes decisions that the council has to make, right? So we will pass this on to rules and ordinance, but.
Just one more thing, uh, Mr. President, I'm doing, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole, but just looking at, at our ordinance, one of the things that's, that may be precluding the natural synergy between, you know, an Airbnb to Airbnb and what we'd be running is the, as Tony had mentioned, in, in the statute, it requires that these be owner occupied units. So if you go, if you're going with like a family of three or a family of four, and you're going to get an Airbnb in San Diego or something, you don't want to be living with other people. I mean, I don't want people living in my, in my living space. I don't care if they're paying me a hundred dollars or not. It's one, I think that's a little bit inconsistent or incoherent with what Airbnb. If I'm looking to really do this, and as the purpose and intent section of the ordinance said, is, is to promote tourism and recognition of Winthrop and all of this, then I don't think we're really just yet ready to be on an Airbnb website. Because I don't think that it would be attractive to have, you know, you come in with your four people to go live with, or other people in their apartment if you're going to visit the Boston area. So that is another thing that maybe needs to be looked at. And that's one of the things that the, that freestanding rental, a short-term rental might, might be able to cure.
All right, we're gonna be having much discussion on this, but if, if anybody has a few comments now, I'll try to keep them brief.
I'll keep it brief. I think gotta be clear about what the goals of the council are before we go anywhere, right? Because from my perspective, we have to start with public safety and public accountability and knowing who is standing next door to me, that's a different face I didn't see yesterday, right? And that we can track that person, the person's registered, the homeowner's responsible, liable, et cetera. I don't think we have in effect today that comfort level. I think as the president said, there's just too much illegal activity happening around this, this community, and we're asking for trouble. Try to stop renting. We're not a big suburban location where people are sitting on twenty thousand square foot lots or even bigger, where a crowd of fraternity brothers can have a reunion and basically burn down the house and have no consequences, right? And you see that all the time, right? I don't think we want that kind of stuff. I'm not gonna go through the whole list of what we don't want, but I think there's a big list of don't wants. Whatever we do should be something that we have, generates the resources that we can strictly monitor and strictly enforce all elements of that business and hopefully put additional money in the town coffers, right? But I stopped from public safety, and I think we should do nothing to compromise public safety.
Council DeMarco?
Nothing to add.
I just had a clarifying question about the owner occupancy thing. Does that mean that the owner has to be present while it's rented out? Or just that it's the primary home of the owner of the property?
In the current statute, my understanding is it has to be present and it has to be a room within the house. So for example, if you had a two-family house and you lived on the second floor, you cannot Airbnb the first floor by this current statute. It would be an extra bedroom or a bedroom up in the attic or something like that that you'd be renting.
Yeah, that's kind of crazy.
And that's the way it's currently written.
Thank you.
Council Manchin?
Yes, I'll try to be brief as possible. Thank you for doing this preliminary work. One of my questions is, is the nature of this report a suggestion or a delineation of the three or four options that you first proposed or?
First of all, I mean, we may not even end up with these three, but I wanted to, you know, kick off the conversation, get it started and see where the council wanted to go.
To get a framework, to get it to rules and ordinance, to give them a guideline and they go where.
Gotcha. Do you guys have, I mean, and I, I concur with Councilor Aiello. There's no point in even talking about Airbnbs if it's jeopardizing the safety of, you know, if what we're doing is making it worse. But I also feel as though we have several goals with this proposal. It's not just about revenue. If that's, that's probably third on the list of priorities. You know, I would say that A, safety has gotta be number one. It's also be, you know, I think that the standard of living, since it's already there, let's make it easy to do the right thing right now. So right now it doesn't feel like it's easy to do the right thing. It's easier to do the wrong thing and not register. So I think, you know, just making the, the laws of the town better for those that want to comply. So I think, and then I think revenue is in there. I also think that enforcement, now, one of the things that you guys brought up, which the Boston's doing, which they said Airbnb said that they would be willing to participate with, reduces our enforcement requirements. By having the actual organization Airbnb go ahead and make those units comply and also register with the D O R makes a whole lot of sense to me. It makes algees, a whole job, a whole lot easier. So I think that's important to be able to kind of find ways to reduce our workload and increase our revenue, increase our safety, increase our standards. I wonder, I just want to make one last comment about this is that I don't think that we have to have any loyalty to our previous ordinance that was written for transient lodging. I don't think that's necessary. It's evolved a lot since we, this industry has evolved in ten years. It's, it's morphed, it's ballooned, it's probably tripled. So I'd, I'd say that we can, we are doing our, our citizens justice by doing it correct to what is now and the future, not to what we wrote in the past and trying to clean that language up. Let's get a clean slate if that's what's necessary. And at the very least, comply and just be in accordance with the state definitions and rules. It seems that's like the first, first and most important thing is to just be on the same page. And of course, we don't want to preclude our ability to tax. I mean, if we're gonna do all this trouble to make this better, let's make a little bit of money. I think the community impact at three percent, seems like there's a no-brainer there. We could do a lot, a lot of stuff, you know, possibly add additional ways to get in and out of town, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Actually give money back to the, the people that are gonna be doing the enforcement, you know. So I think that if we can get more, people are willing to pay it. The utilization in hotels is through the roof in and around Boston. So to be able to tap into some of that, people are willing to spend the extra twenty bucks. So I'm in favor, thank you.
Council Fusillo?
I have nothing to add.
Council LaHonen?
Sorry, nothing to add.
That's okay, thank you. And I, I do agree that, you know, you want to know what the goal is. Is the goal to try to get people to say, hey, it's a one-night stop on our way to the airport and we could get out? Or do we want to look at people that are saying, hey, we're gonna visit Boston, it's six hundred dollars a night to stay in Boston. Let's, why don't we stay in Winthrop? We could, we could hub there and then we could move in and out of the city. I mean, I think it's important to see what you're looking for and then make the regulations to, to adjust to that. But I will officially send this to rules and ordinance and we will wait to hear back from them. Thank you so much for both the withdrawal you put in on this.
Thanks, gentlemen. Just to be clear, we're gonna, I am gonna continue with working with Airbnb to try to get our regulations on there and ramp up the enforcement. So I mean, that's, that's happening anyway, so.
We have committee appointments, it's that time of year. I will take these unless somebody has an objection. I'll take them in two stacks because there's many. And we will take, the first one will be non-policy-making committees or make a motion that the following be appointed, reappointed to our new, non-policy-making committees for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, or take any other action relative thereto. Board of Assessors, Peter Gill, Beautification Committee, Beth Zambella, Anne Kimberly Casey. Board of Registrazers and Voters, Denise Mahoney, C D I C R, Andrea Baez. Conservation Committee, Stephen Machinsky and Timothy Wilson. Historical Commission, Judy Bono. Memorials Committee, Judy Bono and Paul Flanagan. Commission on Disabilities, Andrew Carr. Cultural Council, Mary Gustafi, Joanne Hillman, Larry Hantoon, and Tree Committee, Marie Nguyen. There's a motion by Council Belcher, there's a second by Councilor DeMarco. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Thank you, Tracy. We will now, there are a couple other non-policy-making committees that we will take separately. These are, I, the following be appointed, reappointed to our non-policy-making committees for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, or take any other action relative thereto. Harbor Management and, and Planning, David Belcher. Scholarship Committee, Hannah Belcher. Airport Hazards, Hannah Belcher, Richard Banks, and Colin Kennedy. There's a motion by Councilor DeMarco, there's a second by Councilor Fusillo. Any discussion on these? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the abstentions, and one abstention. Thank you, Tracy. Make a motion that the following be appointed, reappointed to our policy-making committees for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, or take any other action relative thereto. Board of Appeals, John Young as a full member. Board of Health, Christine Riley. Board of License, Ron Vecchia. Planning Board, Gina Demento. Motion by Councilor Belcher, second by Councilor DeMarco. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. A second round of public comment. Yes?
Bill Schmidt, Precinct Five, as well as the Board of Health. First of all, thank you for appointing Christine Riley to the Board of Health. Had the opportunity to talk to her, when she expressed an interest. I think she's very well qualified to be a fine appointment. Our first, our meeting in July is July sixth, so hopefully she can get sworn in quickly. We'll have her there. Also wanted to mention the really fine event at the E V Newton, the Tower of Cluck Ceremony. It was, it was a terrific event, a lot of fun. It would be great to have more events like that, I think. It's pretty nice.
It was a very good event, and again, we thank, again, past Councilor Farino for initiating that. And the Historical Commission did a great job with the event. It was, like Mrs. Schmidt said, it was well-attended and it's a beautiful project. It's really, brings a lot of value to the town. Mr. Duck?
Thank you. Jacked out Precinct One, excuse the glasses, I got something in my eye yesterday, and my eye is red. The light affects it. As far as the ferries concerned, there've been many people that were very much against having a ferry. Commented once or twice concerning the ferry. One of my comments was, we may need a ferry someday. And obviously that day has come. Transportation has been changing rapidly in the United States, especially in the last, you know, fifty years. The other thing is, maybe we should look into a second ferry. While the M B T A is passing the money, it seems a prudent position to take is to get an established price on a second ferry right now. And maybe the M B T A will utilize that ferry. As we've seen, you know, the past couple of months, there's much upkeep on a ferry. So, you know, it goes down from time to time. To only have one is maybe not the right thing to do. So I think we should put together a committee to look into a new ferry, get prices on it, just in case someone wants to pay for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom?
All right, Public Relations. Nomination papers are still available for the November seventh, twenty twenty-three elections. They're available at the Town Clerk's Office. Deadline to return and have certified signatures would be September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Again, well, not again, tonight, but effective July first, Town Ordinance for a number of bins per household and overflow bags. See the Town Website on that, on the new, it's really not a new regulation. We're just enforcing the contract that's in its third year or five. Effective July second, again, the new bus route on from Herman Street to Walden, moving from Herman Street to Walden Street. Are there other Public Relations events? Councilor Aiello?
First is just, I want to make a, a comment. I'm not sure if the other board members are aware of it, but related to the trash ordinance, apparently a couple of citizens have gotten really angry over this ordinance and they're taking it out on town employees, okay? I think it's important for town residents, if you're mad, the town employees that make the rule, we made the rule. If you have a complaint, talk to the town council, be respectful to the town employee. It's just not right. So enough said on that one, but it's awful what's happening out there. A couple of good things, though. One is that on Thursday the twenty-ninth, there's a Mary Ellen Greenway Ride Event, starting from the East Boston Piers all the way up into Winthrop and coming into East Boston. You can go on the website for the Mary Ellen Greenway. I've done it in the past, it's just a great multi-stop environment with a lot of, lot of, lot of participants. Congratulations in particular to Scott Mahoney Wright on the inaugural Winter Pride Ride. That happened, it was a great family event with a lot of kids. That happened over the weekend, that was terrific. And on August, I lost it, here it is, twenty-sixth, the Friends of Winter Beach are gonna be showing Miracle, which celebrates Michael Ruzioni. And one of the things that we should consider is calling that Michael Ruzioni Day since we're gonna be having a big shebang on the beach, showing his heroic efforts. So that's on the twenty-sixth of August at the beach, outdoor film.
First day of school, maybe? It's early, but I'm not saying that. Don't quote me on that, but it is the end of August. I think it's the first day of school for teachers. Councilor DeMarco?
Uh, yeah, just brought it up earlier. The soccer nights put on by the Harbor City Church over at Engleside for the next few nights. You know, even if the kids haven't officially signed up, they'll take anybody. It's free of charge. There's food, there's games, there's dancing, it's a lot of fun. Tony, as far as all this is concerned, I got, I, I tried to go through it right now when you, when you guys gave it to me, and there's a lot to go through. So I'll get back to you on that. And just one thing that, that's in my head, you know, we talked about, you know, today we talked about raising revenue, we talked about raising certain fees, we talked about adding new taxes to homeowners. With inflation the way it is, gas prices the way it is, I would like to see us start talking about making people's lives easier instead of making it harder. So I don't know how we do that, but let's, let's try to make things easier for people moving forward.
We did not actually talk about raising taxes for homeowners tonight.
No, no, we didn't. We, we had a proposal.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Taxes that people would pay if they came to stay. We did not talk about or bring up anything about raising taxes for homeowners. Council Belcher?
Thank you.
Not yet.
The fireworks on the Fourth of July, right around the corner, they're accepting donations. You can mail a check to one oh seven Hagman Road, may payable to the Winter Fireworks. And there are also collection cans at a lot of businesses around town.
Council Manchin? I just wanted to say how I'm really thankful to be in this town. We have had so many great events as of late, and I feel like there's a great community doing all these cool events, and we're, I feel like the progress is really in the right direction. We're making some headway. We got some momentum building and looking forward to a great Independence Day, and I just wanted to say thanks. Council Fusillo?
I just want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July, happy safe, safe, healthy, and happy Fourth of July.
Council LaHonen?
I just wanted to congratulate Phil Rowan on a job very well done yesterday on the best dedication for the anniversary of the Green and Cooper murders. And it was excellent, and it was something very important for our town to recognize and remember. Kudos to, to Phil Rowan.
Thank you. And just to go back to a point Council Aiello brought up on the trash, and just, again, we've beaten this a little bit, but to make everybody understand, there was a contract that was, that was worked on by the previous full-time town manager. And, and that's the contract that we're in. In that contract, it stated that Winthrop residents are allowed to throw out one barrel of trash per unit. We have tried to ease that and over the past two years have let people and give them the freedom and the ability to throw out more than that. We are now in year three of the contract and need to start to enforce the contract. So, you know, it's not a, it's not a situation that came easily for anybody, but it was a contract that we kind of got dealt, so to speak, and, and we're doing the best we can with it. Like Council Aiello said, I think. Like Counsel Aiello said, I think it's extremely important to respect all the public workers. They didn't do anything. You know, we're doing the best we can with this. We think it's an equitable arrangement. And we hope everyone involved handles it in the right manner. And just to echo on what Counsel Fusillo said, and Counsel Munson said how special Winthrop is. We all understand that and know that. But one of the things that makes us so special is the Horables Parade and the 4th of July. It just makes us unique in so many ways. So I do encourage people to be safe, enjoy it. Enjoy the beaches, enjoy the fireworks, and hopefully the weather cooperates with us. And everybody enjoy the 4th and be safe. Seeing no more.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Counsel DeMarco, second by Counsel Aiello. Seeing no objections, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.